I just got the results. It's hard to do, it's hard to do. I think they've turned off.
Yeah, I still haven't figured out what you guys.
Yes.
Hi, is it about meeting in this room?
It's gonna start in thirty seconds.
Okay.
How much should we? Is there an executive section? No, just hang it up maybe.
Sure, I'll check. Thank you. Yeah, 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 it's just like. I have a lot of fun at Mr. Wedding. Should we start wedding because of the Southwest cancellation? She never, she had a destination wedding or something.
She's good.
Yeah, I have this thing. Yeah, great. Congrats, you're good. It's fine, it's fine. Alright, so let's work it. Yeah. Alright, great. But thank you. I can't wait to tell you that we're so proud of you. I'm glad you're here. You're just happy. Like you. This is why we got you so scared. That's why I said. There's a forum tonight. What? There's a forum tonight. Two years ago, we were in a roundtable. To be honest with you, I just didn't know people to work. I didn't know that I heard this and everything. This is easy, right? Like, I just do another task.
Okay, we will start the meeting with a moment of silence. So if you'll stand and we'll do a moment of silence. Okay, with that, I will, if you want to remain standing, I'm going to call to order the January 5th study session of the basic school board. And we'll start with the pledge of allegiance. So if you will join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So our first item on the agenda, our only item on the agenda is training of new and incoming board members, part two. And with that, I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Forless.
Thank you very much, members of the board. This evening, we've got Mr. David Sanders, who's going to walk us through some technology training. I think we got a jumpstart on that already with our newest board member, and welcome to you, Mrs. Walden, this evening. And then we've got training from Casey King around the policy manual and Helen Holland's around public records requests, Robert's Rules of Order, and so on. And you did see a goodie bag that you had that had your Robert's Rules of Order book in there. So that will be helpful as we work through our training today. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. So it's going to be for Ms. Walden and a refresher for everyone else. So just a heads up. So you have, as a board member, you have three accounts, okay? You have an account for Board Docs, you have one for Active Directory, and you have one for email. Board Docs is independent of the other two accounts. So Board Docs is managed by Ms. Cameo and Ms. Martha. So if you need to change your password, that's where you go to do that. It's totally separate from your Active Directory. The other two accounts are Active Directory and your email. Now, Active Directory is what we just logged in, Ms. Walden, to log into the computer. And that's where you use your entire email address. And that's what we just changed your password to. That is works, it controls Gmail and how you log in, okay? And what we just did is what we set up is what they call multi-factor authentication or two-factor authentication. Basically, it wants to identify who you are, okay? So we set up your password, and then it'll also check, send you a text message to say, is this really you, to verify you, okay? So the other thing I want to talk about is a little bit of security and choosing passwords. And this is good for not just for us here at work, for good home practice as well. We at the district a few years ago changed the password to a passphrase. And there's a passphrase cheat sheet or a good practice that we have on our website. We like to, it's been known that in the past, there's been a study that passwords were not good because we used to always have them changed every 90 days because people got hacked, right? And we used to have it to where passwords were encrypted. We always thought, wow, I have an encrypted password like capital A, little a, at sign, pound sign, that those would be really powerful passwords, right? It's been known that people, because they're so encrypted, people have to write them down. And they put a little sticky. And guess where they put them? Under their keyboard. So then this, so they've decided that they've, it's easier if you come up with a passphrase. And a passphrase can be a sentence, okay? And one example that I use is I love to eat ice cream. That's probably a little over 15 characters, okay? Easy to remember. And it's more, it's harder to crack than an eight-digit encrypted password. So to give an example of that, the password Arizona, capital A, R-I-Z-0-N-A, two-one, okay? A computer can crack that in 15 to 18 minutes, okay? The passphrase, I love to eat ice cream, exclamation point, one, takes 387 years to crack. So that's kind of why they changed that formality of that. So just a little word to the wise, you know, you always have longer passwords. Just something to remember that you don't have to write down. Okay, and we did talk a little, the other thing too is we did talk a little bit about multi-factor authentication. That is something that everybody is starting to do. We do enforce that in all employees and all users. Well, obviously, all users, we don't do that with students yet, but that is coming. I'll leave you with just a little tip on cybersecurity stuff. Because we are high-profile users, we will get lots of phishing email. All I ask is that you stop, look at the email, and think, is this really a real email? And if you have to ask yourself or question yourself, or even say, should I send it to David, delete it. Because most likely, it's a phishing email. Any questions? Okay, it's all yours.
All right, I just have. Better? Okay, sorry. To change password. Okay, and then I'll ask you for your old password, new password, and confirm it. Obviously, you have to be in to be able to do that. So if you can't get in with your current password, you can let Martha or myself know when we can change it for you. But if you are already able to be in, and if you're going through a time when you're changing your passwords and you want it to be similar or to remember what it is, that's how you can do it on your own. And then I wanted to go over the library that we have, or the toolkit that we have created for you. When I click on it here, you can see there are several different categories that you can look at. And all of these are just archiving, things that have been done at board meetings, memos that have been sent to you. So if we look at memos, those are when you get the memos from the district to let you know something's going on in the community, so you know before the public is asking you about it, so you have some information. Here we can see that you have a list of the memos that have been done. You'll notice that they are in executive content and not in public content. That means that only you can see them. So for executive content, only the board members, Dr. Forless, I think myself and Martha have access to executive. To administrative, I think all of superintendency plus the board and up. So please just keep in mind that if it is in executive content, it's probably confidential to give you some extra knowledge about what's going on, but it's not necessarily to share with the public. The other thing I'd like to point out here is on the status reports. So every Friday, Dr. Forless will create her status report, and usually Martha, or sometimes I will send it out to you. So you can take a look here. This is one just before break. In the public content, we have just some of the basics of things that are on there. Those help you as a keyword for when you're searching. If you see right above the list of everything, there is a search. And so those will help with those keywords. If you're like, oh, I know that Dr. Forless sent us something about the football games. You can type in football and find the most recent memo. And you can, that's an easy way to search. If you look down under the executive content, that'll have a copy of the actual status report, and that'll have all of the information right there. All right. And when you are looking in the library, a lot of the, if you were curious about budget, when you are looking at it and you click on it, it actually takes you back to the board meeting where that was approved, where that was talked about. So it takes you all the way back. So it has all of that information right there. This is back in 2012. I can look at the financial report and everything that was there. So they are linked to go back to the original board meeting where they were approved or discussed. And you can see where it was on the agenda right over here. So there's the financial report, and then there are the supporting documents right there. And the last thing I want to do is the voting. I've actually created a second test meeting. So Rachel, you can kind of see how the voting goes. So typically, for a vote, you're going to have somebody motion. So this is what I see. This is not necessarily what you'll see. So somebody motions. So if we say, Mrs. Sears motioned, and then Mrs. Hutchinson seconded. All right, then I call for the vote. And then on your computers, you should all see the ability to vote there. Oops, sorry. Then I have to hit open. There you go. Now you should see it. Okay, if you can all just go ahead and choose one, yea or nay, or whatever you'd like to choose, it's not a real vote. Like I said, it is just a test meeting. We will be doing a real vote later when we adjourn the meeting. What? All right, so do you see it, Mrs. Walden, on yours? What about you, Mrs. Sears? Do you see it? Okay. Yeah, let me go ahead. Yep. It is, yep. Okay, I'm going to open it again.
Make sure her little icon, the little person needs to be white, not a.
So you're seeing it, and she's, okay, well, you have a tech person right there. I went ahead and took it off while they're looking at it. Let me know when you're ready to send it again.
The test meeting, if you just go into meeting, active meetings.
Okay, sending it again.
It came up on my screen.
It says test meeting.
Join the meeting right there.
Okay.
Give it a second.
She's in, she's in, she can see agenda.
Yeah, yeah, underneath it, it's the agenda.
Yeah, she's not getting the.
Oh, no, see, it says studies, it still says study session, even though it says I'm logging in.
So she's on the study session.
It says I'm logged into the test meeting.
Oh, wait, in the wrong meeting?
But it says test meeting that she's logging into, so go back to featured.
She is in the test.
No, it's 2023. We redid it. Because it had, the 2025 had Jenny, so.
I'll do it again.
Okay. Here we go.
It said, it said test meeting.
It did.
There, that's what you get.
All right.
And you can choose here and click on one of them. And then up here, if you said, oh, I made a mistake, you can change it before, before the vote is over.
It's that red box.
Okay, yeah.
You can always change it in case.
Well, I said yea, then I went nay, and.
Yeah.
How many times can you change your vote?
Until, until, until it's closed.
All right, and then if, if for some reason it's not working, and you can just vote and say, Ms. Walden says yea, nay, abstain as you want. And then you should see, this will say motion carries for yea. And then, oh, I didn't, I did win for Kiana, because I just closed it, so. All right, I'm going to send one more to you. So that's consent. When you approve consent, it automatically will approve all of them. This is one of the policies. So we'd have a motion and a second. Correct, yeah.
And Mrs. Walden, you'll see that Mrs. Head sits back here, and so that's what she's listening for, and she's running all of this from here while Cameo's out in the lobby, and they make sure all the magic happens. So that's, yes, so you don't need to worry about that part.
All right, you should have another vote in front of you. All right. And there we go. Yeah, this is, this is what we see.
Yeah, please.
So normally during a board meeting, what you're seeing on the monitor in front of you is what's happening on Martha's screen.
You would be seeing probably, thank you, content about the item that you're discussing. Then we, on your computer, is where you would be in the board meeting, and the pop-up would come, and you would do the vote. And then what will happen on the large screens and on the live stream is the summary of the vote and the motion carrying will display for all of the audience to see. So what you're seeing today on your monitor screen is only a training purposes, it's not what you'll normally see.
Okay, and then the last thing I wanted to talk about is just the search function. So in Board Docs, right, if you're in meetings, you can search through the meetings. So if you were looking for, you wanted to see when that policy was updated, the more specific you can be, the fewer results, maybe more targeted. the more specific you can be, the fewer results may be more targeted to what you were looking for. Um, searching for policy, it'll take a little bit, but it'll, it'll show any time that there was a first or a second reading. And if, you know, you can look through, it goes all the way back to 2013. So that can be, so under meetings, under policies and under library, it has search function. That is it for me. Does any?
And I just want to call out that, um, oftentimes we say the toolkit, the board toolkit, we really mean the library. And so the word that you would be looking for in Board Docs is library. We've just kind of had some slang around a toolkit. But we're going to get better about calling it the library, because that's what it's labeled as.
Just to clarify, your, your search is only in that category.
Correct.
Search the library and to do policies, you have to search under policies.
Some of the policies are in the library if you're looking for something specific, but yes.
Unless you use the s- search function up top, the meta-search, and that'll search everything.
So what she's talking about is right up here, um, with that magnifying glass. And you can click. And then that'll search through everything. And again, but every time that word is, you're going to get it. So it can be overwhelming with the results there. So just, um, the more targeted or specific it can be, the better you'll be able to find what you're looking for.
And if you ever have a question, please don't hesitate to reach out to Mrs. Head or to Mrs. Kirby, because they, they work in this all day long. And so they've got a lot of shortcuts. So don't ever hesitate. They're happy to help.
Absolutely. Um, yeah, so what, what I do is I'll make a note of what it is, because whenever I pull something, it changes all of the, the letters automatically. So if I'm pulling four, uh, four G and it goes all the way down to four P, I'll make a note of that so that when I do the minutes, it's accurate. And then I'll pull it down to action. So it'll become an action item. So that way, if you then vote on the consent a- agenda, um, it'll approve everything that's there. But four G, which is now five A, is not approved. It'll be under its own, and then as an action item, um, it can be, um, set up as a motion and then discussed.
So correct, so if, if we have something like we're voting on consent agenda, if there's a public comment on that consent agenda, does that also mean that we automatically pull it from vote if there's a comment? Or is it still included in the, in the consent agenda?
You want to talk about how it's?
It's pulled, okay.
Pulled, okay.
Cause it's not a public comment. Someone submits something asking to talk about that item, right?
Correct.
Yes, so when, um, a member of the public signs in to create a comment, um, you will see at the front, on the front page, we don't have it tonight because we don't have public, because
Yeah.
It's a study session. I mean, when you've filled it, you've filled one out before, so you know what that looks like. What we see here is a, um, a spreadsheet and it shows who has signed in for which item. And so during that time, that's when the board president will ask for somebody to come up to have a, to speak to that particular item.
I understood that that was sort of how it, how it went. If there was a comment, that it would automatically then be polled to be voted on separately.
If it's, if it's on consent only.
It's on consent only, that's, yes, that's what I mean.
Okay, I want to make sure, okay.
Okay. I'm going to go ahead and end the test meeting. So if you see that, don't worry about that. And we're just going to keep going with the, uh, the study session. Ready for me? Yep, no, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, board members, and happy new year to all of you. Um, I'd like to just talk to you briefly about policy development. Um, school boards govern primarily by making policies. And it's through policy that a governing board establishes and communicates its goals and priorities and expectations. Policies establish the structure of the district and set out the rules for how the district operates. Um, in the district setting, policies have the effect of law. Um, the superintendent is duty bound to implement your policy manual and staff and students are obligated to follow it. In Mesa, our policies are maintained in our policy manual and policies are developed in accordance with board adopted policies, which are found in, um, the, the B policies regarding, um, the governing board. So I'll go through the structure of the policies later, but just know that how policy is created is established in policy, in the B policies, which are your policies, about your governance. So specifically, um, I would encourage you to take a look at policies BG, BGB, BGC, and administrative regulation BGCR for information on policy adoption, review and revision. So why do we have policies? Um, you adopt policies for a variety of reasons. And I'll just go through some of them. One, to establish a particular program or goal, or to authorize the superintendent to adopt procedures, which we in Mesa call regulations, um, to carry out that program or to achieve a goal. So an example of that would be the governing board adopting, um, a policy to establish the PAWS and peers program. That's going to take a little getting used to. You might also, um, develop a policy to establish rules for your own governance. And an example of that would be that the governing board adopts a policy that sets the rules for preparing the agenda for its meetings. You might adopt a policy to define the rights and responsibilities of employees and students, such as the governing board, uh, adopting a policy for the conduct of staff and then, um, requiring the district to incorporate those rules into its employee handbook. You might also adopt a policy to ensure that routine decisions will be made consistently to ensure fairness between similarly situated students or employees. And an example of that would be adopting a policy regarding enrollment of out of district students. You might adopt a policy to ensure that a service or activity is conducted in accordance with procedures that will reduce the district's risk of liability, such as adopting a policy, um, governing the administration of medicine to students during school hours. And a lot of times, especially, um, recently, uh, you might adopt a policy to carry out a state or federal mandate that requires all school districts to have a policy on a specific subject, um, such as adopting a policy regarding smoking of tobacco on school campuses. So I will try to tell you, when I bring policies to you, why we're asking for this. Is it required by state or federal law? Or is it something that has just come to our attention that needs a, a policy? Rather than just a practice. So I mentioned the regulations and if you may be wondering how a policy differs from a regulation, and that's actually a really important distinction. Policies are adopted by the board and only the board. And it is a broad expression of the will of the board. So the board will typically, in its policy, direct the superintendent to develop a regulation to implement the policy. And what that does is takes your broad expression of what you would like to see as far as the direction of the district. And you ask the superintendent to develop more detailed procedures that ensure that your policy will be carried out on a day-to-day basis. And in our policy manual, you'll differentiate between a policy and a regulation, because all regulations end in dash R. Um, we also, sometimes you'll see dash F, that, that indicates a form. So things to think about when you're drafting policy. And most of the time, the policies will come to you from superintendency. We will have a draft, so you don't have to start from scratch. But you need to think about, um, the fact that our schools, um, staff, students and the community will be bound by your policies. So it's best to keep them brief and to the point, using simple, plain language, um, to avoid imposing duties or responsibilities that exceed legal requirements. Um, I encourage you to keep your policies broad and allow the administrative regulation to set forth the detail. And then think about if you're creating a new policy or amending an already existing policy, how that might impact other policies that are already existing and, and whether it will be consistent or if there might be a conflict that we need to, um, you know, keep a lookout for that. And I, uh, will do my best to keep you on track for that. So some final thoughts. Cameo walked you through Board Docs, through mostly the meeting function, but I, I know you saw that there's also a dropdown for policies. So our policy manual lives on Board Docs. Um, it is very user-friendly. Um, it's really neatly divided by topic, each of which is noted with a different letter. So as I said before, your board policies are all the B policies. And then any policy related to a student is a J policy, start with a J. Policies related to employees are G policies. So it's pretty easy to navigate through the manual. But just like, uh, the search function that Cameo walked you through, using that same search function in the policy manual is also very intuitive and user-friendly. And, um, I, I, it's a long policy manual and I admit I don't have it all memorized in that search function. It just really comes in handy. It makes it very quick to find what you're looking for. However, if you can't find what you're looking for, please feel free to contact me or my assistant. We can walk you through the policy manual. Or if you feel like you want some additional training, um, on how to navigate through that manual, please feel free to call me. I'd be happy to help.
So are all regulations that relate to a policy in the policy, uh, area of Board Docs? So under that policy, there's, say, BC dash R. Is that true for all regulate? We could find regulations there as well as the policies.
Always, like you said, listed below the policy. So it'll be BC and if there's a regulation, BCR.
And could you just describe how the board finds out about the regulations?
Absolutely, thank you. That's a good, great point. So as I said, in policy, you will direct, if, if a regulation is needed, you will direct, in the language of the policy, the superintendent to develop a regulation. So that regulation is typically drafted in superintendency and then it will go in Dr. Forless's status for two weeks in a row for your review and input. It is not something that requires a board vote. But if, um, you have comments, would like to see some changes, then you would let Dr. Forless know and we, we can go ahead and make those.
And it's also important to know that for a policy, we have a first read and a second read in a public meeting. And, um, so that is, we, oftentimes, uh, feedback from the first read, um, prompts changes that we will bring back in a second read. And should we need to, it would be another, a third read, but generally it's two. And public can comment on that as well.
And you can only talk to one other board member. So if you wanted the board to talk about a regulation, you'd actually have to ask for it to be put on the agenda? Yeah.
And then that request goes to the board president or me. And then I would share with the board president.
One other thing I wanted to mention is sometimes policies, sometimes we don't need them anymore. So there is always the option of retiring policy. So you can adopt, you can amend, you can also retire. And that is also just done by a simple vote in a board meeting.
Policy, uh, to discuss policy, is that the same process of, of something that you would ask to be put on the agenda? So both regulations and policy, we'd work with either you or the board president to, to bring it to the agenda?
Yes, and, um, typically new policies or revisions. So if we're bringing in new policies, so for example, um, this last legislative year, we had quite a few policies that were dictated by new legislation. So, uh, Mrs. King drafts that policy. It, I share it in status, then it comes to the board for a first read. And then there's a discussion. Based on that discussion gives direction to administration to make changes, brings it back for a second read. And then if the board's happy with it and it's that state, then it is voted upon. Um, should there be a regulation that follows that is in status for two weeks and there's been no discussion about it, but there is a concern from a board member, that can, the request can go to the board president to bring that regulation to a board discussion, uh, for a public meeting discussion. So yes.
And do, do you tend to write the bulk of our policies rather than having it be outsourced to maybe one of the organizations that we, that we're contracted with, like the, like ASBA, for example? Do, do we tend to keep more of our policy writing in the district?
So Mesa is one of the rare school districts that does not, is not part of ASBA's policy bridge. We do, um, get their policy updates. Um, so I am kept in the loop of when, because some, sometimes things happen and, uh, I'm not able to stay on top of it. So I do rely on, sometimes on those policy updates. Um, I like to write things myself. So, I mean, I, I will use those as a guide. But, um, you know, there is a specific way that policies are written in Mesa and I try to be true to that and, um, you know, keep, obviously also keep in mind what, how the board wants the policy to be written. So I guess my answer to your question is no and yes. Our policies are, um, guided by outside sources such as ASBA, but, um, we, we do write them in-house.
That answers my question. And I, I mean, I, that sounds like a good process to me, because we have more ownership. But say we can then, our policies. Thank you.
You bet. That's all I had.
All right. I think I'm up. So I've got several small topics that I'm just going to stack on top of each other and, uh, just interrupt me if you've got a question or whatever. The first topic I wanted to touch base on quickly is the board's, uh, rules of order and Robert's Rules of Order for the conduct, as you conduct your meetings. If you remember, um, toward the end of last calendar year, we did an update to policy BDDE, which is your particular policy, B policy, um, that defines how you're going to conduct business as a board. It talks about the fact that you have a motion and a second. It talks about the fact that the president is allowed to act in full capacity of a board member, motion, second, discuss, et cetera. Um, but then we added a statement in there, um, based on experience last year that says if policy BDDE does not tell the board how to handle a certain situation, the board will defer to Robert's Rules of Order to guide that practice for you. I'm going to say 99% of the time, your business is handled by the way you have described it in your policy. But there's that 1% where you need, where you need the backup. So what I've provided for you today is a laminated sheet. On the front is policy BDDE and the, and the
They were in the bags.
Oh, they were in the bags. Sorry, they were, they were in the bags. Um, and the idea is if you want to, just leave it at your spot on the dais so that you always have it there. You can always study it in Board Docs, of course. And if you want a second one to take home, of course, we can give you a second one. But on the flip side of it, I gave you a summary chart of the Robert Rules of Order motions. Now, there's two different types of motions in Robert's Rules of Order. The top half of the chart is, and, uh, motions based on order. So, and you read it from bottom to top. I know that sounds strange, but this is just general parliamentary practice. So the most basic motion that you would have would be a main motion, which is the business of the day. I move, we approve the consent agenda. That would be a main motion. Sometimes you might just say so moved, if it is something that the president has already read out in the, the complete content. You might just say so moved, which allows the business of the board to move along, um, swiftly. Then as you read up, those are the other types of motions that you can do if there's a motion on the table. For example, amending a motion. That's probably the most common one I would expect that you would want to be familiar with. And that is the opportunity to change the wording of the motion to ensure the accuracy of what, what the business you are trying to accomplish. of the motion, to ensure the accuracy of what, what the business you are trying to accomplish. When you have a motion on the table, and then you add a motion, in my brain, I'm mathematical, so in my brain, it works like doing math with parentheses. So as you add parentheses, you go in, and then you have to come back out again. For example, if somebody moves to amend a motion, the vote that you're next going to take is you're going to vote on the amendment. And you're either going to decide you like the amendment, or you don't like the amendment. If the amendment passes, then you go and you vote on the amended motion. If the amendment doesn't pass, you vote on the motion as originally presented. So you kind of go up and down this ladder. And I would say that those are probably the most important ones you need to know. The other one I want to mention briefly, though, is the concept of tabling. That is a common phrase that people tend to use when they talk about parliamentary procedure. Well, let's just table this. That is actually a very strong motion. It's kind of got a superpower. So I would encourage you to understand the difference between postponing and tabling, because postponing allows you to postpone it until you have additional information, or until another meeting comes up, versus tabling, which if you don't do something, you have to have another motion to take it off the table. So just have, when you have an opportunity, to support you in that, we did give you each a Robert's Rules of Order in brief. And I did that on purpose, because the official Robert's Rules of Order is about four times as thick as this, and the pages are half as thick, and the type is half the size. Know that we will always have a Robert's Rules of Order in completeness at the table, so if we ever do have to refer to it, we will. But this is going to cover 99%. This will cover the other 0.9%, and this will cover the 0.1% that we need to. And then, I hardly, highly, I expect that we'll never get to that thick book, but we will have it available if, if we need it. So-
Then we can suspend the rules according to this.
And then, if you want to, you, it's your meeting, right? It's your meeting, it's your rule. So if you ever want to, you can suspend the rules and do what you need to get done.
So my question is, the chair, the president-
Yes.
-will be the person who will be monitoring the meeting, the chair, the board's decision. However, and it'd be rulings by the chair, and we should always be addressing everything through the chair. But when there comes a question, who on staff is going to be the person in charge?
So the parliamentarian will be Mrs. King. And so she will be monitoring for parliamentary procedure, as well as open meeting law.
Terrific. So we have, should there be a question on procedure? Are we, is this procedure correct? And we've had, we've had those questions many times in a meeting. So, Ms. King, you're it. Great. Appreciate that. Right. Because instead of who, we need to know that, that you are the one who are going, who are going to be our consultant, if you will, on parliamentary procedure. And it just makes a meeting go better and more efficient, and it's stronger that way. And, and this way, we can, we can be very focused, and we should be in our meetings. I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, the familiarity of the rules and the procedures at Robert's rules, as well as your own, is obviously very important for each of you. But the number one priority for each of you is to focus on the business at hand, and allow us to worry about the procedural rules being followed appropriately, because it's a good division of power.
But in order to get things done, we need to know the rules.
Yes.
Why we've all got the guide. And, and that way, we are, we are good stewards of the time that we are here together, because this is the only time that we are here together, and we can discuss things as a board.
Order any other questions? I'll move on. Public records. So, public records, this is more about awareness than anything else. As you know, the public has the right, and the, we have to provide the ability for the public to have open meetings, and they have the right to observe the business of the board. Similarly, the public has the right to inspect the records of the district. And that falls primarily in our legal department, again. They manage the public records requests that we do receive. Public records are guided by two statutes, two ARS, ARS 39, 121, and 122. At the federal level, it's referred to as FOIA, but in the state of Arizona, we refer to it as public records. You have two policies, well, actually, you have a policy and a regulation that governs that for you. It's KBA and KBAR. I want to point out that public records are distinctly different from student records and personnel records. Public records are about the business of the board, excuse me, the business of the district, not just the board. And the other thing I want to point out is that for it to be a public record, it has to exist. And what I mean by that is, we do not, we do not create public records because of a request. For example, if someone was to ask for the files or the document that specifies who sits where on the seventh floor of the bank building, and we did not have a map that delineated who sat where on the seventh floor of the bank building, we would not create that record. We would say it doesn't exist. That's a very simplistic example, but that's a difficult concept sometimes for some of our constituents to understand, that it's not about creating a record for you. It's about providing the one that exists. We're required to maintain a variety of records, and, and those are very well-defined for us. And the level of retention that we need to keep, the timeframe that we need to retain those records, is defined through the, the state archives. And they are very different. There are some records that are 500-year records. Those are considered in perpetuity records, because they are so significant for the business of the district. Others might be simply a year-long retention. And we try to follow that as closely as possible. It is to our benefit to not retain records longer than are required, because if you do retain a record longer than required, you are also required to produce that record, if you have it. So we do try to maintain records at the, at the retention length that we are supposed to. Our goal here, and my goal here tonight, is to just talk to you about the, we would like to hope that we don't inadvertently have board members become the retainer of district records. And that is why we provide to you an email address. That is why we provide to you Google storage, so that you are not inadvertently retaining a public record in your personal world, whether it's your personal email account, your personal hard drive on your personal computer. Because if a public records request comes in, and that record exists in your personal world, you are still required to produce it. The location is not what makes it a public record. It's the content that makes it a public record. For example, a real simple example is the board member highlights that you do. Frequently, board members will send me photos. I will create the slides that you use to talk about the, what you have observed in schools for the portrait of the graduate. That public record lives with the district, because I created it. If you create it, it lives, it can live with the district, as long as you created it on your district computer, in your Google Drive, or whatever, using your district accounts. If you create it on your personal computer, you're now retaining a public record. That's, that's a great way to, to think about the ease. The other one that comes into play a lot is email now, because of just the availability of being able to communicate in written format with each of you. For example, back in the day, when you got a phone call from a constituent, sometimes you probably still do, but when you got a phone call from a constituent, or you had a face-to-face conversation, there would be no public record of that conversation, because it was oral, whether face-to-face or on the phone, unless you recorded it. If you recorded it, that recording becomes a public record. Email, because it's in written format, is a, is, has high potential to be a public record. So my recommendation is, obviously, all district-related business that you do, you use your district email account. Now, for some of you, you may be contacted, and Mrs. Walden, I think about you, because you had an email account that was highly publicized during your campaign. Many of your constituents might still use that until they get used to you having a district one. When that occurs, my recommendation to you is always copy your district email account in any conversation or response that you have with everybody. That way, it is now moved on to the system. And if we get a public records request for all email, and, and we do get these, all email conversations between a particular individual and governing board members, we do not have to come to you and ask you, can you please produce all those records for us? We can produce them, because we have this, they're on our system. So that's just a real simple and easy way. Just CC your district email account, and that will make everything easy. Because it can be invasive if somebody wants to come in and try to prove that there are records on your personal devices, or on your personal accounts. So that's what I wanted to say about public records. Any questions on that?
People could still come and say, I think you have it on your computer. I think you have it on your phone. Is that what happens in that instance?
It's, it's due diligence that we have asked for and attempted to retrieve all the records. And if we have, and in good faith, you have turned over everything that you have, we're done.
And sometimes, you as a board member, might receive somebody asking for public records, forward that email on to Casey's department, and she takes care of it. So that's not, nothing that a board member needs to respond to.
If you ever do get a request like that personally, please direct them to our website, which has an online public records submission form.
I will get a district assigned email. Is there a district assigned phone number or phone that I also need to have, or is it just the email?
We use the Martha's phone number, the main phone number for the district, to get phone calls to you, and then she would provide that message to you to return a constituent's phone call.
Thank you.
I have is notes. Are notes, I'm constantly filling notebooks, are notes a part of public record?
So the law refers to those as personal notes of the maker, and as long as you have not shared them with anybody else, they remain your personal notes.
Are personal, like a handwritten note, or, or markup set if I, on a policy. I'm highlighting things, I'm writing out my questions, and whatever, as my preparations for the meetings. Those are, those are my personal notes, as long as I have not shared them with another board member, or would it be a member of the administration? Who, who can I not share my personal notes with?
Really, anybody.
Got it. Okay.
You are allowed to maintain personal notes, to refresh your own memory, and, you know, to, to keep yourself on track. Just keep them, keep them private, and they would not be subject to-
Would they also be, so sometimes, I know, I've, I've written stuff, and I, I put them in a, in a Word doc, and I put them in a file on my computer. Those are still per se. Got it. Great. Thank you.
They're not shared with anyone.
Drafts have a similar protection. Sometimes drafts are the same way, that it's not, if it's not a final document, a draft does not have to be a, a public record.
Dr. Forless, we get a lot of emails from people asking for things, not just public records. Could, could you just address what people should do when they get those letters?
Fantastic question.
Either the board as a whole, or individual board members?
Thank you for asking that, Dr. O'Reilly. So when the board, board members will receive an email that says, I want to know what's happening at this particular school. I'm worried about what's on the playground, or something. Who knows, whatever the conversation is. You can respond by just saying, thank you so much. I've received your email. I will forward this on to administration, who can find the right answer for you. And then if it is a trend, and I see that it, it's kind of a bigger deal than just a, a quick answer, I get the information, and then I will do a follow-up to let the board as a whole know what happened as a result of that particular situation. But send it on, send it to me, or if you know for sure that it's something about finance, or operations, you can send it to Mr. Thompson. If you know it's about personnel, to Mr. Wing. If you know that it's something legal, it can go directly to, to Mrs. King. But when in doubt, send to me or to Martha, and we will get it to the right people.
If it goes to all board members, my understanding, when I started, that the board president then responds on behalf of the board and forwards it, so you don't have to get five copies?
Correct. The board president, right, if you see that it, there is, some people will write to the governing board, and that will go to all five of you. Some will write to five individual board members. And then the board president takes the lead by saying, we have received this, and then forwards it on, so that five people don't need to do that. So that is a responsibility of the board president.
Media relations. I have all the fun topics. So media relations, obviously, is, is so important. It's an important channel for us to let our constituents know what's going on. It's an important channel for our constituents to investigate potentially what is going on. So we want to make sure that we have strong media relations, and, and we have a process to make that happen. So we have an individual, a PIO, Public Information Officer, who is our point person for all media relations. That's Joseph Valdez, the gentleman who comes and lines everybody up perfectly for photos. He is our primary PIO, and I am his backup PIO. And we are the ones that would be responsible for providing any district response to the media, either proactively, if something's occurring, or reactively, if the media has reached out to us. In any situation where there's a need for a media response, that could be a difficult one, it could be something that we want to make sure that the media's receiving the appropriate information. It is always done in consultation with Dr. Forless and the appropriate superintendent's members, usually the area superintendent's, if it's something about a school. Certainly, Mr. Thompson is well-known as a media person if it comes to finance in schools. And Mr. Wing has a reputation as a, a media expert when it comes to human resources in, in public education. So, so those two in particular, Scott and Justin, frequently respond directly to the media as, almost as an expert in representing Mesa public schools. That said, each of you have your own individual voice, and, and can, and respond to the media if you choose to do so. Do know that if you get a media request, Joseph and I are always available to consult and talk about what an appropriate response might be, provide information, make sure you have the right data, if it's a data-driven request that they have. But do know that if you respond, you are responding as an individual. You're not responding on behalf of the board, and you're not responding on behalf of the district. You would be responding as an individual who is a board member. At times, when there is something large happening, or where we know we're going to have some ongoing media coverage, the board may choose to appoint one of you, usually the board president, to be the spokesperson for the board. And then, then in fact, that person can speak on behalf of the board, similar to what we just discussed with the emails. But you have to actually appoint that person to do that. So, but we are always, always available to respond on your behalf, if you choose that, and then always available to counsel you in any way before you respond. Some of the things that I'm going to talk about in social media apply to media as well. And I think one of the most important things I want to bring out is that you don't respond too quickly to something that will inhibit your ability to act as a governing board meeting as it rolls out in process. Probably the best example of that would be something that might cause liability for the district if you respond early on, before we know all the facts, and before investigating- If you respond early on, before we know all the facts and before investigations have been completed, and you imply an opinion, you may end up hurting your opportunity to be able to act as a board member later when any decisions might need to be made, because you will have, will no longer be impartial. So that's why it's always helpful to, to consult first.
Maybe some examples where we are the last judge-like expulsions, where we're making a decision about a student's future, so we shouldn't talk about that, because we are going to be the ultimate determiner of that. Right?
Excellent point. I was going to add that, you, you said it better than I was going to. The other is, is that's part of our, the superintendent board communication protocols about media. If I believe that there's something that, going to hit the media, even in, as a preliminary, I make sure to text and let each of you know, so that you're not surprised. And we try to do that as quickly as we know, and I give as much information as I know at the time, but then we follow up with more additional information. And oftentimes, that's those memos that, that, the confidential memos that Cameo talked about. Oftentimes, it's a death of a student, or things that are, a family would, we'd want to be very careful about protecting a family.
Social media. So as you know, hopefully, the district has a very active social media presence in both English and Spanish. We primarily use Facebook and Instagram. Those are our two primary channels that we communicate and share information with our constituency. We encourage you to participate in social media. We hope that you follow us, like us, and share the great news that Mesa Public Schools is putting out. Your reach helps our reach. You have circles that we, that ripples that we don't have access to yet. So we love when you share our information, and then hopefully those individuals choose to follow us as well. There's a couple things I want to talk about when it comes to social media, just to make sure that we're thinking about implications of what you do. The first is, and this comes into mostly open meeting law, and that is to make sure that you do not, as five board members, or as three board members, conduct a de facto meeting, meeting on social media. That can occur if one board member comments on an upcoming board agenda item, and perhaps expresses their intent to vote in a certain way, and another board member responds to that, or several board members respond to that. That can be a problem for open meeting law, because you have determined your vote before a full discussion in an open meeting with your fellow board members. So we always caution about talking about will be. You can talk about opinions, et cetera, but we want to make sure that you do not, do not have the, the image of having taken illegal action through social media. Want to be careful that a quorum of the board is not discussing something on social media that could be coming to you for a vote in the near future. It doesn't have to already be on agenda. If it is an item that would require board action, and it, there's a good possibility it would come before you, we want to make sure that three of you are not interacting on social media on that topic. You want to make sure that you are super cognizant of what you learned in executive session or through executive content, and that you do not share that on social media. That is actually a violation to disclose what you've learned in executive session. You want to make sure that if the posting is a public record, if they, I consider all our social media posts, all our district's social media posts, a public record. You have to start, you have to think about the retention of those public records. We don't delete things on our social media accounts unless it violates our, our standards that we have posted, because even a comment to our social media account is considered a potential public record. One of the things that you can always do to ensure that you're retaining those records appropriately is if you're going to craft your Facebook post, or your, your post in a Google Doc, and then copy and paste it into your social media and hit, and hit post. That way, it was actually created in the Google Doc. What you posted is a copy. So the social media no longer is the public record, the Google Doc is the public record, because it's always the original, that's the record. So a simple cut and paste, it takes time. I know it's not as easy as sitting there while you're waiting to get your coffee in line at Dutch Bros to be able to do a social media post, but it is one way of making sure that you're retaining a public record that you might be creating. Let's see, make sure I cut. Make sure that you are not violating copyrights when you are posting to social media. One thing that, Google Images is, I love Google Images, and I despise Google Images sometimes, because people think because an image, they find it when they search Google Images, that it is public property. It is not. It is, it, just because it's on the internet is not meaning that it is public property, and that you can copy and, and post that nice photo you found, or whatever. There are definitely rights to those images along the way. So you need to make sure that you know who the owner is of any content that you might be posting. Now, taking and sharing another post, that's not an issue, it's if you're the one that are being, is choosing the content. So best to use, best to use a photo that you know that you took it, or, or you know who took it, and be super careful about copyrighted characters, et cetera. Make sure that you're not intruding on any personally identifiable information for a student. Some of the things I always think about is the inadvertent, I, I kind of think of it about the, the triangle rule. If you, if you can see who the child is, you know the name, and you know what school they go to, and your social media post is going to let that, is going to make that happen, that's not a good thing to do. It's too much information about a child. So no faces, certainly if they have, you know how we have their names frequently written on the front of the desk, so that the teacher knows, and they're probably learning how to write their name, go, go use your photo edit and blur that name before you would ever post that photo, if you happen to catch that student's name, et cetera. So let's just be very careful about personal content. Make sure your opinion is not one that is defamatory, that would bring the person that you are commenting about disrepute, contempt, or ridicule. You just don't want to get into a defamation of character, and you want to make sure that you fact-checked anything, so that you're not producing a false statement. Liability is probably the biggest one that I think about, and social media and our community's, constituency's expectation of immediate response from you is probably the biggest one that I worry about. We talked about it a little bit with media statements, the same holds true with social media. And Dr. O'Reilly said it beautifully, where if you, if you can't comment, just tell the community why you can't comment. I understand that you're looking for a comment from, from me about this, but I need to protect my ability to do my job as a board member going forward in this particular case. If you have some particular information you need, you know, fill out a public records request or something, but we certainly don't want to have something that says, something that somebody who might bring suit against the district could pull up your social media account and bring it and say, oh, look, she admitted liability, or he admitted liability for the district. Same thing with employee grievance hearings and employee hearings as student expulsions, they may always come out. So what we say is that there are some great things to do with social media after all that. One is celebrate. Celebrate the wonderful things that are happening in Mesa Public Schools. Celebrate the things you see. You can link to positive stories about the district. We certainly love when you share a great story that came out. Be careful with all these paywalls these days on, on media accounts, et cetera. Sometimes it's not a great experience for your reader, because the article that you shared is behind a paywall. So just be cognizant of whether it's a public article, or one that you're seeing because of it being a paywall. And you want to make sure that you don't take that article and reproduce it, because it's not something that we own, so we shouldn't be taking the content and, and not giving credit where credit is due to the individual that wrote the article. If we put something out inviting the public to join us at something, again, please, please share that content, so that the more people, our reach is greater. We know your reach is greater. Helps us get information out, certainly become an, become an educational expert, share information and knowledge that you have about education, that's important. And be careful of embargoes. So sometimes you will get information, perhaps through Dr. Forless's status report, about, for example, letter grades that just came out. Those are usually embargoed to a certain point in time, and it's a need-to-know basis that we can share with you, that what our letter grades are going to be. So one of the things we always say is if you see we've posted about it, then you know you can post about it. If, if we haven't put something out about letter grades, or an award, there's a good chance it's embargoed, and we're waiting for that to, that embargo to lift before we can post. And then you, of course, can share or, or make your own post about it. So, things we would love you to do is do no harm. Don't harm the district with social media. Don't mix business and pleasure. So if you have a personal social media account where you share your, your children's highlights, your family highlights, and what you, your crafting highlights, or whatever, please have a separate social media account where you are conducting your social media presence as a board member of Mesa Public Schools. I have two social media accounts, the one that I use to manage the district's social media, and then the Helen Hollands that hopefully none of you know. But I, we always, we always keep those separate. Always make sure you state if it's an opinion. Communicate official business through official channels, and never forget that once you post something, it is, you no longer control it. It doesn't matter how quickly you hit that oops button, somebody has seen it, and somebody may have screenshotted it. So, so type once, think twice, then post along the way. So those are my counsel on social media.
Two questions, one comment about sometimes there's shareable links in newspapers.
Yes.
Wall Street Journal article, that was shareable, because I have an account. So you can post those, and it wouldn't be frustrating. So sometimes that's a way of posting something that would be better. What about, okay, you said, don't put in graphics, because they might be copyrighted. What does a district have for board members who want to do that? Are there, I know there was SmugMug. Are there, are there sources that the district has that could be available to board members who want to take a picture of a school that's allowed, or something like that?
Well, that's a great question. We have a library of graphics that we design for a variety of things, whether it's an event, an award, HR is probably being, doing the most graphics right now with all of their job postings. We could potentially, you know, we have a library of photos of all of our schools. That would be a great library to give you all access to, so if you go to visit a school, because we all know a post is only looked at if there's a photo that goes with it. We could give you access to that, so at least you can post a picture of the school, and maybe a picture of a bulletin board that you see at that school, and then talk about what you did at that school, which keeps you away from posting students, but still gives you a nice graphic image. So I'd be happy to make that folder public, so that you could work with that.
I'm, I'm thinking about like the logo for Portrait of a Graduate, or like the Avid logo. So if I, so if you're at an Avid school, like an Avid showcase school, and you want that Avid logo, having, having a library that we could access of that, that would be really very helpful.
Okay.
Like maybe IB, or AP, or Mesa Public Schools Athletics, or, or something like that. Even, and even the school logos. If we're, you know, if we're at Westwood, and we're at the Unified Basketball, it would be very cool to have the real Westwood logo as we are promoting what Westwood is doing. So I, I know that, I, I used to do this at ASU when I had to promote programs, and so it was really good to have a bank, if you will, of logos. And, and that might not be a bad idea for us to be able to access.
That's a great idea. The other thing I would like to, I, I'll develop for you as well, is a list of the links to, in our website, to those programs. So for example, if you're at a school and you're talking about Avid, I would love you to use the MPSAZ.org/Avid, if we have that one, but put that link in, because then if somebody's interested, they can go learn more about Avid. Or if you're at that school, put the link for the school in, and they can go learn more about that school. So that would be another thing, is all of our web links, because those pop up nicely when you put them in social media as well. Great idea. Okay, we'll start developing that.
If I do a school tour, because I, you know, I've seen the board meetings where we'll showcase when board members go to, to tours, is the preference that we don't post online about that until it's been presented in the board meeting, when I know you, you'll showcase it in the board meeting, or is it something where I can do a post, like, hey, today I went to such and such school?
Oh.
I don't, I don't need to wait for the board meeting?
No, hey, today is much better.
They do. They want to, I, I feel like the public likes to know what the board is, is doing, and...
Yes.
Our, our meetings are never going to go viral for people to see what we're doing, so that helps.
Hopefully not.
Yeah, I hope not.
Yeah. Yeah. No, timeliness, timeliness is everything, so do it as soon as you can, and then here it's more of a, a summary, a, a look back of what you've done.
And you said, I send those to you, though, if I want them, is it to you, I send them to, if I want them included in the board meeting?
Yep, if you've got great pictures that you want included, and I just built slides for you to, to talk off of.
Now, is that the kind of post where I should create a Google Doc first, or you said, to make it sort of like, here's the public record of it, or since it's going online, I don't, I mean, I, I know I don't have to do that if it's going online, but you had mentioned, even if it's going on social media, I don't know, a site visit, I guess, isn't really a public record, though, is it?
No, it's, it's, it's a record of what you have done as a board member. It's, it's a very gray area, to be honest with you, Mrs. Walden. The, the one thing that if I, if I, having done all of the public records training and the State Archive training, they, they of course teach you the absolute safest way to do it. But one thing I do know is we cannot rely on a third party, such as Twitter, Facebook, or Instagram, to be the holder of our public records. So that's why developing it, writing it in a Google Doc and pasting it allows us to be the holder of the public record. The other thing you can easily do is post it, screenshot it, and stick the screenshot in your, your folder with us, because then the screenshot is there. Some of the social media allows you to download an archive, and Twitter, that was how I always managed our Twitter account, was I would just download, download the archive of our Twitter account. We're not perfect at it, so I'm not going to expect you to be perfect at it.
Thank you.
And then one thing that you can do is to ask the principal of the school, are there any children that have opt-out forms that cannot be photographed? And you want to make sure that you would not photograph them, and if you did, it was from behind, that they couldn't be identified. That's what I always ask, and that's my safety measure, because I'm not that good.
Yeah, I, I would definitely ask. I was thinking more if it's photos, it'd probably be more of like a, with the administration or a principal, or something like that. But yeah, I'll, I'll ask, I'll ask no matter what. Yeah, it is a good question.
And do know that if you're at a public event, if you're at the fall carnival, where there is no expectation of privacy, if you're at a graduation, if you're at a, an open band concert, where anybody, any member of the public could go to that band concert, all the rules are kind of off as far as not being able to get a student face, or whatever, because there is no expectation of privacy in those environments. If you're at a third grade play at one of our elementary schools, and there was no invitation outside of the parents of that classroom, that would not qualify as a outside of the parents of that classroom, that would not qualify as a public event. Okay, last topic, and this is a little bit of preparation to help you prepare for the 10th. So the first two major items that you do on your organizational meeting on January 10th is you elect your governing board president, and your governing board clerk. Several years ago, several of these board members were here during this time. The governing board worked diligently to provide two guiding documents for the board to work with as they go through this process. The first is the Mesa Public Schools governing board roles and responsibilities. You should have a copy in front of you. And the important piece of that document is obviously that it talks about what the role of the board president is, what the role of the board clerk is. So it is very beneficial for you to review that, and know what those, what the expectations of the president and the clerk are, as you contemplate electing your governing board president and clerk. The second document is called the selection of a board president.
Really quick, I don't have that. Is it somewhere on our Board Docs?
Yes, it is.
Oh, never mind.
Yep. Yeah, so, yes, it is in, it is in the library as well. So you'll see that the president has quite a, quite a bit of responsibility, all the way from A through D, that they, and D is ones that they share with the president. And then the clerk has some specific responsibilities as well, primarily stepping in as the board president in, in the president's absence. The second document, the selection of a board
And training the new board members.
And training the new board members, that's right. The selection of the board president, again, reiterates the qualifications of a good board president, and gives you some considerations to think about. I think number two, under qualifications, was just such a powerful statement that the writers of this particular one put in, which is, based upon the issues and challenges the board will face in the coming year, who has the best skill to lead the board in addressing these issues? So I, I leave that to you. Then you will notice that there is a process written. The way you elect a board president, and then following that, elect a board clerk, is you accept nominations until there are no more nominations. So there might be one individual nominated for board president, there may be two, three, up to five individuals nominated for board president. The nominee, the nomination has to be seconded, so there has to be a second for the nomination, or the, the motion to nominate will fail. And the nominee has the opportunity to accept the nomination. Following that, each of the nominees have an opportunity to give a brief statement about why they would like to be the board president, and why they feel they would be a good board president, as well as other board members have an opportunity to speak on be, on behalf of an individual that they would like to be board president. Then the board president will call for the vote, the acting president will call for the vote, and if any individual during that process of the vote receives a majority of the vote, you're done, and your board president is elected. If it is a split vote, and nobody gets a majority vote, then the individual who received the least votes falls out of the process, and you revote. You'll do that process, and then you'll do it again for the clerk.
There's no discussion for the board, then, about who's going to nominate for president? All of that will just happen on, on the 10th, in the regular meeting?
It's all, it's all open meetings, so there is no, there's no conversation beforehand for the board to discuss.
Now, so there's the three minutes that's given for a nominee to state, is there an opportunity for a board member to ask any questions before the vote? Or is it just they, they can comment, and then we move to, to vote?
So that's a lovely question about rules. I would say that
Yeah, it is regular
Oh, it's
If you, that you got, a nominee has three minutes to state why he or she would like to be considered, and then board members can take three minutes to state why he or she feels a certain nominee would be best suited. So if, if you're talking about, does the board member, do the board members have input? Yes, and that's when you would have input, after the person who was nominated makes their statement.
Sure. But it's not a question, yeah.
Questions, no.
Okay.
But they use their time for questions, and fill that for minutes?
No.
Okay.
No. Because we, when we developed this, this process, we wanted to streamline it, and to be as fair and efficient as possible.
Okay.
Which is under the purview of the board. If you, if you choose to modify these in any way, just move to, to set aside the rules and offer a different rule.
But that would need
Yes.
With a, that would need a second.
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
And a two-thirds.
Thank you for explaining that.
Which means four out of five, because two-thirds of five is
And that's everything I have. I think we're done this evening.
I, I have a question. And I probably should have asked this when we were talking about the public record and the email, but if, if somebody from the public, and we talked about, they might email all board members, which I think, I think I've even done before, how does the board decide, and I know usually it's the president, but if, you know, if we're not discussing together, and somebody emails, is there an opportunity to just like, tell the board president, hey, I'll take this one, let me answer this one for you, that to this person for you? Or if they email the whole board, is it just standard practice to always defer to the president?
The standard practice is to defer to the president, and then you certainly can have a conversation with the president to say, I would really like to, to pursue this, or learn more about what's going on here. I think there's, there might be something happening that we need to be aware of, and then make sure, I would know as well, and we would all, I could fill in, maybe there's an employee investigation that is happening, maybe that there is, there's more to the story, but you certainly can talk to the board president about it.
I just wondered, I mean, I'm, I'm assuming I'm gonna get a lot of
You will.
So I want to make sure I understand, you know, if I'm, if I'm seeing this, that we're not ignoring the, the, the public, that, you know, I know who I can talk to, to say, hey, did somebody respond to this person or not, or to volunteer and say, I can respond to them, and, you know, take some work off your plate, for example.
And I think that, I will tell you that there was times during the, the height of COVID, we were, our email inboxes were just jam-packed, and so we did some dividing and conquering. To be honest, it's pretty quiet right now.
Say that.
I know, I shouldn't have said it out loud, I put it in the universe, I know. But it's pretty quiet right now, so we monitor based on volume.
Whoever the president is, I can, I can always work with that person, you know, especially if it's maybe something from a school I just visited, or maybe it's someone I even know that's emailing the board.
And say, there's more to this story you might want to understand about, or something.
She could always, you, you're not precluded from responding, and just saying, I know the board president's going to respond, but I read your email.
Of course.
Something innocuous like that, you're always
Acknowledge them, definitely.
For reaching out to you, then, you know, I will refer your question to, and you should expect, and in that, make sure that
Yeah. Okay, that's great, thank you so much. That, that's my only question, that was it.
That's an important question.
So this is the end of the second part of the board member training. Is there anything any board members would like to say, any words of advice, or anything, any that we haven't covered, that maybe should be touched on? I don't expect any, but I just want to give you that opportunity, if anyone wants to say anything. Okay. So then we have one more item, and that is adjourning the study session. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
We have a second.
A second.
Okay, we'll call a question, and call for the vote, and you'll see something come up on your screen here, once, if it's awake.
Can I hear S A?
It just came up on mine. You can just say A.
Yes, Rachel Walden says A.
I'm logged out already, so Rachel Walden says, says A. A, I, A. I, I.
You got it.
All in favor? Has everyone voted?
Yes.
Okay. And it passes five to nothing. With that, we're adjourned. Have a good night.